The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
This meeting of Starkville Board of Aldermen will now come to order. Please rise for the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to be followed by moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you have before you a copy of the modified written agenda. And before I call for revisions generally, I have one proposed revision. And this comes on a request from the city clerk. In our budgetary process, there is a special assessment that the downtown district is assessed, and it is an additional two-mill tax levy. The consideration of the approval of that two-mill downtown tax levy for fiscal year 2011 needs to be on the agenda tonight. I would propose to place that at the end of the board business agenda as item O. Is there any objection to placing the consideration of the approval of a two-mill downtown tax levy for the 2010-2011 fiscal year for the city of Starkville on the agenda under board business as item O?
This may be recognized.
You may.
City clerk, this is just a formality. There's nothing, they didn't ask for no additional tax credit, just a formality. Is that what I understand it?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I have no objection to any of those comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And actually, I'm sorry, it'd be item N.
Is that something we had to actually vote on, or can we put it on consent?
Can definitely put it on consent, but I would prefer one of y'all make that recommendation. Is that a recommendation that'd be placed on consent? All right, so the proposed revision is to place the approval of the two-mill downtown tax levy for the 2010-2011 fiscal year for the city of Starkville on the agenda, on the consent agenda. Alderman Carter?
I don't see anything up here for explaining that. Can you give us a brief description of what that is?
Yes, I'll ask the city clerk to explain.
It's the downtown tax mill rate has been there since about 1972, I believe, that it's ongoing, and it was just inadvertently left off of the milling when we adopted the tax mill.
Basically, they have taxed themselves. Those businesses have levied a 2% tax against themselves that they pay and then put that down into the business association?
That's right. And the funds go directly to them after?
This is above the 9%?
This is a special assessment. A district can create for itself a special assessment district where people in that geographic area choose to pay a higher tax rate for a particular service. All right, so?
This is at the lower taxes.
Right.
Is there any objection to placing that matter on the consent agenda? Any objection? Any objection? An objection seeing none, that matter has been placed on the consent agenda. Any further proposed revisions? Alderman Davis?
Under Mayor's business, I'd like to move my item A to consent.
All right, Alderman Davis has proposed to move item A under Mayor's business, consideration to the approval of the grant for the alternative fuel project for the joint city, county, and MSU state energy program grant to the consent agenda. Is there any objection to that? Any objection to moving item A under Mayor's business to consent? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, please make note of the change on your agenda.
I'd like to also move under board business A to consent agenda.
Any objection? An objection to moving item A, discussion of the waiver for banner permit fees for the homecoming banner competition to the consent agenda. Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, please make note of the change on your agenda. Alderman Davis, do you have further proposed revision?
Because of the signed indemnification clause by the student association, I'd also like to include item M under board business to the consent agenda.
All right, Alderman Davis has proposed to move item M under board business, consideration to the approval of the Bulldog Bash Special Event Request and In Kind Services to the consent agenda. Any objection? Any objection? An objection seeing none, please make note of the change.
And last one, under department business building codes, move item 1 to consent agenda.
Okay, that is proposed.
With the recommended?
Mr. Griffin?
With, I think there were eight conditions? Is that correct? With the eight conditions going along with that.
All right, Alderman Davis has made a motion to move item B1, consideration to approve PMZ item number FP 10-06 to the consent agenda with the eight conditions as provided by staff to the consent agenda. Alderman Davis, that's your proposed revision? Any objection? An objection? An objection seeing none, please make note of the change to your agenda. Further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revision? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda's revises in order. A motion has been made by Alderman Corey to approve the agenda as revised, do I hear a second? Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alders in favor, please signify by saying aye. Alders opposed, please signify by saying nay. Mayors clearly passes. And the first matter on your, or excuse me, we also have before us the consent agenda. Is there any objection to the approval of the consent agenda as revised? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda has been approved. The first matter on your agenda is the request for approval of the minutes from August 23, 2010.
I move, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vaughn has made a motion to approve of the minutes from a recess meeting of the Board of Aldermen held on August 23, 2010. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
It's my motion.
Do I hear a second? Motion's been seconded by Alderman Carter. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Alders in favor, please signify by saying aye. Alders opposed, please signify by saying nay. Mayors clearly passing. And that'll move us into comments by the mayor and board, and I have a few comments The first comment is, I'd like to announce a public hearing that will be held on the Lewisville Street widening project. That is a widening project that will take place during next year's construction season. So it is in the very early stages, and the engineer has some preliminary concepts to present for public input and gather public opinion on how best to proceed with that project. And that public hearing will be held on September 28, 2010, and that's going to be at 5:30 at the Sportsplex in the board room. So would encourage everybody to come out and attend and provide input on that project. Next, I'd like to announce Responsible Dog Ownership Day. This is going to be a program that's going to be held on October 16, 2010, and it's sponsored by the Golden Triangle Kennel Club as well as the Octavahaw County Humane Society. It's a program that's intended for the public to learn about various breeds, characteristics, and observe a parade of dogs, receive handouts on responsible ownership, including cat and dog disaster kit, and information about spaying and neutering pets. Should be lots of information about caring for pets at the Responsible Dog Ownership Day. Next couple of announcements, I'll ask for a little help from board members who have been pursuing them, but I want to get it on everybody's radar screen because the first week of October is shaping up to be a busy week for us. On October 4th and 5th, we will have the Placemakers Group at the board-approved funding to come in in conjunction with the comprehensive plan to provide a workshop on form-based codes. And Alderman Davis has been working with this group, and Alderman Davis, if you could, could you explain a little bit about what's going to be going on and where board participation will be appreciated on October 4th and 5th?
Placemakers is a business based out of Albuquerque, New Mexico, and Montgomery, Alabama. We approved the contract with them last board meeting. And Ms. Glady, or Ms. Gregory, I was calling you Ms. Glady, sorry. Ms. Gregory is here to talk about, well, she's talking about beautification. But there's a significant part of their process that's ongoing with the Mississippi Main Street Association. Obviously, we're ongoing a comprehensive plan amendment. And part of that, we feel, is the implementation side from the policy directive. And Placemakers is an organization that specializes in the implementation of policy from a form base, a smart code basis. And so what will happen, they'll come in on the 4th, we'll do a day-long tour the 4th. On the night of the 4th, we'll have a dinner with certain groups in the community. On the 5th, we will have a day-long workshop, and Mayor, I'm assuming that will be held in this boardroom, is that correct? Have we made that decision?
Yes.
We'll be in this board meeting, or in this boardroom. And there's five or six, and I don't have the schedule with me, but all of them deal with the implementation of smart codes, what these mean from the community, all, you know, specific to the planning side. Most important to the board, obviously, we'd love to have you all day, but at noon, we will have a lunch, and that will be the time in which, specific to this board, we want the board, the mayor, Ben Griffith, our city planner, and Edward Kemp, our city engineer, to be involved with that lunch so that we can have a one-on-one discussion of exactly how we move forward in the implementation of these different policies. So that's October the 5th at noon in this boardroom, and then obviously all day. So more information, the press release is being worked up at this time, so more information will be forthcoming on those details.
And we've also got another great opportunity, which also, our window of opportunity turns out to be the same week. On Wednesday, October 6, thanks to a great find by Alderman Sistrunk, we will have a stormwater workshop that'll be hosted by an expert from the Environmental Finance Center, which is a regional institute, but interestingly enough, it is housed at the UNC School of Government, which is where I went to school, although I'm not the one that actually had a connection with the group. Alderman Sistrunk saw a workshop that this group put on in Auburn, thought it would be fantastic, and asked if they might ever be in the neighborhood here. It turns out, they are, and they are willing to come to Starkville to provide something that I think will be a very useful bit of information for us. And that was, that would take the form of a work session that will be held on October 6 at 5:30. Alderman Sistrunk, would you like to elaborate on the program?
I would. Stormwater, drainage issues, infrastructure, all things that are important in many parts of the city of Starkville. The person who's going to be here is named Glenn Barnes. He is with the Environmental Finances Group at the University of North Carolina. He does a terrific educational seminar, lets you know what some other areas are doing, presents some opportunities that we may or may not decide to explore here in the city of Starkville, but it's a real opportunity to educate yourself about how these are being handled in other parts of the southeast. It's quick, it's interesting, they have good pictures, so it's a real opportunity for us.
5:30 on October 6. And once all the details for these events are formed up, Tanya will give you all a call and let you know exactly when and where everything's going to be going on. All right, and my final announcement is, I would like to introduce a new employee, And Justin is the new custodian for City Hall. He is originally from Starkville and attended Starkville High School. Previously, Justin was working two jobs. He worked at McDonald's and stocked shills at the Dollar Tree. Justin enjoys spending time with his parents, Tammy and Willie Mitchell, and his cat, Samuel. In his spare time, Justin likes watching football, grilling out, and traveling. Please join me in welcoming Justin to City Hall. All right, that does it for my announcements. Are there any announcements from the members of the board? Any announcements from the members of the board? Any announcements? All right, seeing none, we will move to citizen comments. Any citizen wishing to make comment may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you will be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
All right, good evening to the mayor and board, my name is Allen Towne, Board of Aldermen, seven. All right, good evening to Vice Mayor Sistrunk and Alderman Vaughn.
Good evening, Allen.
Shills not crying, and we have some voice of reasons that are need very, need very attention. Our Wood Street and Louisville Street, our intersection that goes out to Louisville Street, we have a problem with the greenery blinding the vehicle and the pedestrian. And definitely have trouble when the bus have swing in to the conflict. We have to back up to let the bus in, pedestrian and vehicle. And also, we have a problem at the back of Piggle Wiggly, on the side of that big house on the hill, the greenery blinds the pedestrian and the vehicle from the cars that coming in and coming down. We also have a problem with our, the hill that's on Fellowship Street. Now, we have our 66-year-old elderly lady that live at a brick house at bottom of that street, and a lot of people jump that hill. And she's afraid that she could get killed or hit if they jump that hill and don't see her. Our, the brick house right there, in the middle, they have tore mayor block downs three times already. That needs to be looked into. And we also concerned about northside drive.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Further citizen comments?
My name is Wes Shelton, I'm with Bell Buildings Squad, I have a request for the citywide tailgate, and I've got a little quick letter here and a map, and I'll explain if I can pass that to everybody?
You may.
Real quickly, last year, came before your request that we block off Lampkin Street from Worley Street, South Montgomery is it, we have the citywide tailgate. We have several hundreds of people come to our tailgate, which also includes the businesses on Lampkin Street. You know, we're gracious to grant us that request last year with the help of the city police department, and we would like to request that as well. The date is next, not this Friday, next Friday, October the 1st. The times and the locations of where we'd like to block off, same as last year, but we would appreciate your help in this matter.
Would someone like to place that matter on the agenda under board business? All right, Alderman Parker has made a motion to amend the agenda, adding an item O, and this time it will be O. The consideration of granting permission to block off Lampkin Street for the citywide tailgate on October 1st, from Worley to South Montgomery, from 9:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Is that your motion?
That is correct, and I'd like to go ahead and put it on the consent agenda.
All right, Alderman Parker has made a motion to include items previously stated on the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Corey, and this will need to pass unanimously to go on consent. Alderman Carter?
I've only got one question. Is it correct the city doesn't have any barricades?
Sure.
Like, can we do something, I'm in favor, I mean, all in favor of this. Do we have barricades?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some kind of, it's a portable fold-up accordion deal that the police loan us and set up for us, and it works great.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to Alderman Parker's motion? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection seeing none, that item has been added to the agenda and placed on the consent agenda.
Thank you for your help, and I'll invite you to attend.
Further citizen comment?
Mayor, Board of Aldermen, Stan Sheridan, owner and operator of awful recycling. I noticed in your eating packet that you had no explanation of what had conspired to the city asking for the RFPs on the curbside recycling. So to clarify, on Thursday, September 2nd, 2010, I met with Mayor Wiseman to review the weight reports and discuss the costs associated with the sorting of the curbside recycling. I had hopes for an amendment to the current contract to help cover the cost for the coming year. The following Thursday, September 9, 2010, I received a certified letter signed by Sharon Boyd stating that Starkville Recycling was in breach of contract due to not having large truck scales any longer to provide recycling weights by. The next day, Friday, September 10, 2010, I met again with Mayor Wiseman to discuss the contract, and he explained that he and Sharon had reviewed the weights and costs together and had decided to RFP from other recyclers. I then asked him about the breach of contract letter and handed him a copy. I explained that all recyclers are weighed on platform scales certified by the state of Mississippi and recorded as they are sorted. Mayor Wiseman said he knew nothing in this letter and that must be some kind of misunderstanding. Remember, Mayor Wiseman had just told me that he and Sharon Boyd have reviewed these reports together. After the letter of termination was sent to allow for the RFPs, the press has been told that we do not have scales, we do not provide you with a weight report after months requesting, which all of this is untrue. It has also been stated that Starkville Recycling, excuse me, it's also been stated that Mayor Wiseman and Sharon Boyd are not content with the reports from Starkville Recycling, the amount of materials collected each month. How ridiculous can this be that these persons or person can stoop to this level to try to define an organization as this?
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Are there any further citizen comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move to public appearances, and we have two public appearances scheduled tonight. One of the items has been placed on consent agenda, but this might provide a good time to explain your program. And that is a presentation by Catherine Stubbs on the activities of the homecoming event and the request for banners and a permit fee waiver. Miss Stubbs, and you'll have 10 minutes to make a presentation.
Okay. If there are any questions, I have a handout, if y'all each like one that explains what the banner competition is and the requirements. And also, since, I guess, the banner wave fee has already been approved, then if y'all don't have any questions for me, it could be a short appearance.
Are there any questions for Miss Stubbs? Any questions or comments from the members of the board?
I don't, I know all about it, but maybe you want to tell everybody here just a 20-second in case they've got a business that could be involved with this, so?
Sure. The banner competition, we, the Student Association Student Activities Committee will be passing out forms for the competition, and we will be taking it to the businesses. And also, CC Clark Incorporated has provided banners for the competition, and that is why, you know, the banners are already free, and that's why we wanted the waiver to be to be free. And this is a great way for the businesses in the community to be involved with homecoming and promote the spirit of Mississippi State across the community and not just on campus.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments by the members of the board? Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Miss Stubbs. Our next public presentation is by Jennifer Gregory, requesting approval for the proposals for the matching beautification fund. Ms. Gregory?
I think Alderman Davis placed it on the consent agenda, so just want to thank y'all for that. There should be a handout that you all should have received after your packet, just stating exactly where the funds that we raised came from and where we plan to spend them. It is, you know, the end of this fiscal year is coming up, and the projects will not be completed by the end of this fiscal year, so we're hoping that you all can lock in that commitment of the funds that were allocated within this fiscal year to let us complete these projects with the funds that we've raised. As you see, it's been a true kind of community effort. We've received money from the partnership, the Mississippi Arts Commission, the Starkville Area Arts Council, Town and Country Garden Club, and private donations. And at the bottom of the page, it shows where we'd like to allocate the money for the specific projects. And we do plan to use the city's full $15,000 matching funds that you guys have committed Additionally, we'd like to respectfully request that in your budget planning process, which I know has pretty much come into a close, that if there's any way that any funds could be allocated towards this contribution, matching funds for next year, we feel like it's a really great program, and the community has really come out and supported it as well with the $15,000 we've raised. But I'd love to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Gregory? Any questions or comments from Ms. Gregory? Are there any questions or comments from the members of the board?
I guess from a timeline standpoint, a couple of these we hope to have completed by the end of the fiscal, or calendar year.
Yeah, definitely. We hope to have at least two of them completed by the end of the fiscal year, just in the next, you know, week or so, and the rest of them, most of them completed by the end of the calendar year. We've already, we've got plans in place, we've got artists and supplies and everything lined up, we just had to secure the final funding and receive the approval from you guys to complete the match, which we really appreciate.
Any further questions or comments? Alderman Sistrunk?
Question for Ms. Outlaw. Procedurally, do we need to do anything since these won't be completed by the end of the year to reallocate those funds next year from the?
Well, because the board has already committed to the $15,000, if they, if they get the funds in before September 30, we will be obligated to expend those matching funds.
Because there's $12,500 remaining in the matching fund. Are we have spent, I think this board has approved $200, or $2,500 in the matching fund line item, is that correct?
That's correct.
What she's telling you is you have made a blanket approval of the $15,000 contingent upon matching funds coming in.
Right.
Now, that expires unless you decide to do it again after October 1st.
And that's, and that's my question, do we need to somehow reallocate those dollars to?
What you'd probably want to do is you'd probably want to take $15,000 from contingency and create that line item again next year.
We don't have a line item?
That's correct. If you want to do an additional $15,000 for the next year, that's what they don't have now.
Because I guess to clarify, we've got the $12,500, we've got the full $15,000 needed to match right now.
That's correct.
And so that money could be deposited within the next, I mean, at any given time. But the key is, is that, for example, a welcome mural, a theater mural, a community mural, and, you know, these items will take months to complete, and so we can't invoice those full amounts by the end of this fiscal year.
That's right, but they will have, their monies are locked in. So they have their, from this fiscal year. It's the, it's the October 1.
City new.
Exactly.
So as long as we get our, our funds in by the end of this fiscal year, then we're good to go.
Yeah, the city's obligated to match that.
So the projects, the check is?
Projects don't have to be done.
No.
They have to have the money.
That's right. The projects don't have to be completed, they just have to have the money in before September 30 in order for the city to match it.
Okay, good. And then what you could do after that is you could decide whether you wanted to take all of the funds that weren't utilized, let's say it's $12,500, to continue the program on a $15,000 basis, you could put $12,500 in a line for next year. Or if you wanted to make $15,000 the annual amount for the match, you could just roll $15,000 in the budget next year. But that's a decision for the board. Further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Gregory.
Thank you very much.
All right, and that will move us to public hearings, and we have two public hearings scheduled tonight. The first public hearing we have scheduled for this evening is the fifth public hearing on amending of the City of Starkville side ordinance, number 2- on amending of the City of Starkville sign ordinance, number 2008-10, and the City of Starkville code of ordinances to provide for expanded enumerated users for city rights of way guidelines and permitting processes for said users, amortization of nonconforming signs, and other minor revisions and clarifications. Fitz Griffith, would you like to introduce this one for us?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, the item before you this evening is the fifth public hearing for revisions and amendments to the city's current sign ordinance. In your packet is a draft with strike throughs and double underlines to assist you in identifying revisions from the previous four public hearings. A memo highlighting some of the major amendments was also included with your package to follow up on the report from the Ad Hoc Sign Ordinance Committee. Most of the revisions throughout the sign ordinance are clarifications from the Code Enforcement Division to assist in better and more easily understood compliance with the sign code. Several definitions have been added and clarified, including a definition for residential message signs, which address such signs as relay-for-life and yellow jacket supporter signs. Section 13 on page 15 addresses directional signs. This section basically allows two off-site directional signs with specific dimensions and prohibits them from being located within the public right of way. These types of signs require permitting by the building department, and entities located outside the city are not allowed to place signs within the city boundary. A significant addition to the signed ordinance is section 18 on page 18, which provides an amortization schedule for required compliance of nonconforming signs. For example, window signs would come into compliance within six months of the effective date of the new ordinance. Wall signs have 12 months to come into compliance. The more expensive signs, such as monument signs, multi-tenant business signs, pole signs, and roof signs, have seven years to come to compliance, the intent being to provide businesses and property owners ample time to bring their signage into compliance. I should point out that the Ad Hoc Committee added item G, which exempts signage which has been permitted in accordance with the city's current sign ordinance from the proposed amortization requirement. The enforcement section at the bottom of page 19 specifies that business owners are responsible for signage violations with possible suspension or revocation of city privileged licenses for repeat violations. The city clerk and city attorney will need to provide the administrative hearing officer with specific instructions and guidance regarding these actions. The property owner is, however, ultimately responsible for the actions of his or her tenants. Finally, in section 21 at the top of page 20, the mayor and Board of Alderman are specifically tasked with the review and possible granting of exceptions of the requirements of the sign ordinance, while the review and approval of dimensional variances remains with the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. The city attorney has reviewed the draft ordinance and suggested some slight changes, which I have provided at your seats in a revised consideration agenda packet identified with the revised draft watermark, and that was this at your seats. If you thumb through that, you'll see that it was mostly some words here and there added, and they're in bold. That is a clean draft version with the exception of those words and phrases that are in bold for the city attorney. The revisions are bold in black for your reference, and you can see that most are very minor. And for clarity of the proposed ordinance, Mr. Latimer may want to speak to you directly about them. With that said, I'll try to answer any questions you may have, or I can wait until later in the meeting to do so, if that is the board's desire.
Questions or comments, Mr. Griffith?
Mayor, can I tag that?
You may.
In looking at the last revised, not this one, but the one that was in our E packet, I noticed that this ordinance had been amended so many times that it was mixed up on how it was talking. In other words, a definition would say something, but a provision regarding that definition would say another. And what Ben and I worked on today was just making sure that everything locked up. There were no substantive changes, we were just making sure that it was consistent all the way through.
Further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments?
I have one, and it probably could wait until later in the meeting. The section on directional signs indicates that those signs would only include the name of the organization, the logo, and a directional arrow. It's not really uncommon for those kinds of signs to also indicate a distance. Would it be appropriate to add distance to the list of acceptable items for those signs?
Ben?
I don't see any problem with that. I know the Ad Hoc Committee talked about that, Mr. Dumas, Mr. Park, and Mr. Carver. We looked at several different ordinances that, from around the state, that addressed directional signage, and I believe that that was cobbled together from several different ones, and those were some of the specifics that they had. So that's where that came from. If that was to be included, that would entirely be up to the board.
I don't have any problem with that, and also, since this revised, or since the draft came out, I've heard a lot from churches and folks with all the technology they've got now with Google and whatnot, also putting their address on it. So that's one thing, you know, not only a distance, but an address, in favor of changes.
Further questions or comments, members of the board? Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Alderman Dumas?
Ben, let me clarify this, and this goes back to a question that Alderman Sistrunk asked me. On directional signage.
Page 15, probable.
We have in here on B, section 13B, each organization should have, or may have, two off-premise directional signs. The signs shall be no larger than six feet, or six square feet, no higher than six feet. There's nothing in here that says anything about the number of signs on one pole. And I'll just go in and use the one sign as an example. There's a sign on the corner of North Montgomery and University, where there are two church signs on that pole. And I'm guessing with the size, it is, would it be a number of signs that would be the trigger or the square foot of the cumulative sign size? If two signs could be placed on the pole less than the six square feet, is that allowable?
I would think it would. I don't think you would have any more than two signs on a pole, like at a corner. Generally, when you look at signage, if it's a V-type sign, you look at those as two different signs, but if they're back-to-back, like what's in front of the business, you don't count each face of the sign, it's considered one. With that being on the same pole and being a directional sign, you know, most of the signs that we noticed, you know, that when we looked, that's where we came up with the six square feet. I believe most of those signs were two-by-three, which is a pretty standard size, which is why we thought that that would be appropriate, since that seemed to be what was the most commonly used size.
So since there's nothing in here prohibited by number, it's a square footage? So I guess that would answer that question, right, Sam?
Further questions or comments?
Ben and I, our current sign ordinance allows for, going back to the amortization schedule, right now, if you have damage to your sign, or what triggers the, you replacing your sign now?
It's 50%. If a sign is damaged or replaced at more than 50% of the value, you know, if a truck was to hit a sign and destroy it, obviously, they'd have to comply with a new code. If an existing sign was just going to require, you know, someone was going to paint, maybe add some structural spore, or do a face change, the structure of the sign was going to remain the same, that face change certainly isn't anywhere near the 50%. So they can continue to use that sign, even though it's nonconforming as far as height and size, they're not hitting the trigger for the 50% as far as replacement and compliance.
50% being based on, what do we base, I mean, the value?
The value of the sign.
So whatever it cost them to put it in the first time?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And a face change, which is the majority of what we see, they'll repaint, you know, then they have some rust, they'll paint it a different color, clean it up, and a face change on even a fairly large sign is a couple hundred thousand dollars, you know, $1,200, you know, just those fiberglass panels, those plastic panels that you see laced in with the lights, you know, the internally lit signage. So, you know, the sign itself was significantly higher. It doesn't even approach the, you know, the 50% value, you know, most of the time, most of the time.
Further questions or comments by the members of the board? Alderman Carver?
On page 19, dealing with enforcement, it says, "After D and E noncompliance or nonpaying fines by business owners may result in suspension or revocation of city privileged license." Then E says, "Ultimately, the property owner will have to pay the fines within 90 days." So let's say somebody rents to 15 different tenants, has strip mall, shopping center, anything installable, and if, so that's saying that after even the revocation of a privileged license, if the business, not only the tenant, but also the property owner would ultimately have to pay all any fines?
They generally, the property owners are generally responsible for any type of violation, I mean, not just signage, but, you know, garbage collection, mowing, you know, routine maintenance. E is kind of a catch-all if a business went out of business or moved to a different location. And we've had a couple of those occur where they had multiple violations, and before we've been able to collect, they've moved. And, you know, and I, and myself and Mr. Lyles tells everyone that the intent is not to collect fines, the intent is to get folks to comply. So Mr. Lyles is generally very well aware of folks, and Ms. Turner is, you know, by the time something comes to Ms. Turner, the administrative hearing officer, it's usually because of multiple violations. That's kind of a catch-all if all else fails.
Further questions or comments by the members of the board? Any further questions or comments by the members of the board? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the public comment portion of the public hearing, and we'll hear these in a 30-minute time block. I'll move from those wishing to speak in favor of the proposed amendments to those wishing to speak against the proposed amendments in alternating fashion, and any person wishing to speak may be recognized for a maximum of three minutes, and we'll time each side out for a total of 15 minutes. That's how we'll get to our 30 minutes. Once each side has exhausted 15 minutes, our 30-minute public comment session will be concluded. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed amendment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, my name is Jurin Blankenship, and I'm pastor of Trinity Presbyterian Church, and I'm a member of the Starkville Ministerial Association, and I'm sure that much discussion, input from various interests, and careful thought have gone into this proposed amendment. And I want to say thank you for keeping this discussion alive through all its various twists and turns. Of course, those who will find a suitable place to worship and pray through directional signs will thank you for that part of the ordinance. Church buildings are used for many purposes, and I say thank you on behalf of the many people who will be guided by directional signs to the meeting of a group or an organization that serves or builds up the community, and you will be making it easier for persons who seek support, counseling, and healing from many different problems. You'll help those who are looking for help and food, those who need assistance in various ways, and individuals will be guided to places where families and friends are gathered to rejoice at a wedding or share comfort at a funeral. Thank you for making it easier to navigate in all these ways.
Is there anyone wishing to speak against the proposed amendment? Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed amendment?
Good evening to the board, my name is Allen, town of Watch, Alabama. The citizens are beginning to wonder, we continue to make this and make that, we're the sign ordinance have any foundation. We have a nation coming up in Oakland that will be flooded with law sign. People get confused on what's what. It throws everybody off. The Board of Alderman has a nation coming up also. It makes the people very frustrated that they say this, then they turn around and say that. Letting who know what they doing. We need to let some of the ordinance have some weight, understanding, and less confusion.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed amendment?
I'd like to step outside of my row as Police Chief brings you all some historical data you might not realize about the sign ordinance. 20 years ago, in 1990, I was on the Chamber of Commerce Beautification Subcommittee, and at that time, we researched ways to bring Starkville up to date in regard to signs. And I was charged with finding legislation in communities in our state that had been successful in accomplishing that. At the time, the city of Ridgeland had just prevailed in a lawsuit that challenged their amortization process of their sign. They were successful, and we tried to recommend that we follow Ridgeland's ordinance, and that was in 1990. And I found that that was probably the one that would be the best fit for us. Certainly, there were some that were more extreme, such as Madison, where everything was cookie cutter. But that was a good fit for us, and I think a lot of what I've seen here about amortization, and I try to familiarize myself somewhat with what me and them have done, and I think they've done a great job, and this fits right in with what our recommendations were two decades ago. So I just thought my having that knowledge was something I probably needed to share with y'all now I go back being Police Chief.
Thank you, Chief Glenmore.
Chief, as luck would have it, we've come full circle to now put the Ridgeland language in this ordinance.
I thought we said it.
Is there anyone wishing to speak against the proposed ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed ordinance or no? Anyone wishing to speak against? Seeing no one, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance or no? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance or no? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone wishing to speak for, against, or indifferent to the ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak period on the proposed amendment? All right, seeing no one, we will move back into board discussion on the proposed amendment. Is there any discussion by the members of the board? Any discussion by the members of the board? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, that will conclude our fifth public hearing on the proposed amendments to the sign ordinance. And that will carry us to our second public hearing of the evening, and that is the first public hearing on amending the sidewalk ordinance, 2009-7, and the City of Starkville code of ordinances to allow for variances and an appeal process. Alderman Dumas, would you like to introduce this one?
I will, I'm going to ask Mr. Gafford to come up. I guess it's two board meetings ago that we discussed, and I think Alderman Carver brought this to the board, and I think all were in favor of the fact that we needed to have some type of language in here that talked and spoke directly to a variance process. And so what has happened in that short time, and I do give credit to Mr. Gafford and Bethany Stitch, and obviously, Alvin Turner and others that are on that Transportation Committee of being very timely in preparing a document that I think is first and foremost very objective, and I see that as the most important part of this process, is having something that really takes the political side out of this and puts a process that is objective in front of not only those that are hearing the variance, but in front of the department heads and others who go through this process on a daily basis of looking at what these things mean. I'm going to turn the ball over to Jim and let Jim talk about the actual details of what's specific to this, but because I think there's two or three different parts, and I do want to pull your attention to a letter that really takes each part of this and explains it even further, that all of you were emailed yesterday, and it's in your board packet, or not in your packet, but it was in your box yesterday. So, Jim, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Alderman Dumas. We have been working, trying to work diligently and expeditiously to get this before you. As Alderman Dumas pointed out, you should have received a letter yesterday, and I apologize for getting to you so late, but that's just the nature of the quick turnaround we've been asking on this. As we discussed in the previous board meeting that I was at, the basic philosophy behind this was to create a very open and objective process for granting of variance. And of course, we also looked at several other elements of the ordinance as well that we will discuss, with the idea of creating a method by which we can uniformly enforce the ordinance over the entire geographical footprint of the city. For the basic reason behind that is, with the exception, I think there are exceptions for agricultural zoned areas, if we don't create a uniform enforcement, except with the exception of where undue hardships are caused, what you effectively end up doing is, will have two problems. One is going to be, you're creating and will be adding to sprawl within the city by One is going to be you're creating and will be adding to sprawl within the city by making development cheaper outside the urban core of the city. And I think that's important. If we're looking to continue revitalization of our downtown area, we can't be making it less expensive to start building things on other parts of the city. And the second part of that is, if we do that, we're going to find ourselves down the road back in the same problem we have right now with no connectivity. Because what you're going to see is more development on the outlying areas of town, and then all of a sudden, people are going to want to have access to that, and we won't have done our due diligence by providing the proper transportation infrastructure in those areas. So, if you will, if you'll allow me, I'd like to go through, just in order of how it shows up in the ordinance, the various changes we've made. Starting with Section 3.2, I know this was not what we originally asked to do, but under advisement from city staff, it was recommended that we provide a simpler threshold for determining when sidewalks should be required in redevelopments and when they would not. And based upon that, instead of the original language essentially looked at a percentage of the cost of the addition that was being done based on taxable value, and we were advised that that was a little bit cumbersome to determine and problematic with enforcement. So, looking at other ordinances, we have set a base floor at $100,000. Any improvement over $100,000 will require the installation of a sidewalk. And then, of course, we also have a second exception to that, which is assuming the sidewalk installation does not cost more than 10% of the renovations being done. So, I think that creates a pretty easy process by which city staff can go through and look and determine where the ordinance will impact and where it will not. It will also make it simpler on development for understanding, their understanding of ordinance as well. Other, a couple of other changes in Section 3.2, we discuss extending it from lot line to lot line. I believe that was Mr. Latimer's and Mr. Kemp's recommendation, just to clarify legally what is being required by the ordinance. So, that is why that change is being added there to the lot line to lot line item. If you'll move on to Section 9, obviously, we have to describe that there is an appeal process, and that is what you find there in Section 9. It's very straightforward, and there's not much to that. The meat of what we have done is in Section 10. And there's, of course, it's very long, and it looks to try to fill in as many gaps and loopholes as possible. It basically states that variances may be granted through an appeal process in the case of undue hardship due to topographical impediments. And an undue hardship is defined as being three times greater than the average cost for sidewalk installation where you wouldn't have topographical impediments. Now, how do we define what three times greater of some objective standard is? This Department of Transportation sets forth average construction bid prices for the state on a quarterly basis. The Transportation Committee is proposing that we meet, and we already meet more than quarterly, but quarterly, we will set construction bid prices for Starkville based on the information we receive from M.D. and as well as input from city staff. That will allow two things to happen. One is it will also impacting in Section 3.2, which if someone is trying to determine how much a sidewalk is going to cost based on average cost from the city, it's very simple to look at linear feet and calculate on a linear foot basis what the average cost for sidewalk installation should be in Starkville, and then based on what their cost will be to find out at the very beginning of this process whether or not they will be able to apply for a variance. The remainder of the language looks at finding ways to certainly basically describe the documentation that's required to be provided so that proper educated individuals can look over it, and educated individuals, not being myself, but city staff, specifically the city engineer and the city planner to review and make sure that things are properly documented so that someone can't come back and say, "I don't want to put in a sidewalk, therefore, I'm going to go out and dig a six-foot hole in the front of my property, and then all of a sudden, I'm going to be beyond the threshold, I have a topographical impediment." Basically, it prevents someone from creating topographical impediments. However, you may say, "Well, we don't have a lot of topographical impediments in Starkville." That may be true, that may not be true. We have a lot of open drainage in Starkville, and of course, in certain instances, open drainage is going to impact whether or not the cost of installing, or the cost of installing a sidewalk. Now, we do have triggers in there that says, "If you have a way to get around these issues, you have to provide for that. You can't just say, 'I want the sidewalk in a ditch, and it's too expensive to pipe and cover the ditch.'" But if there are no ways around that, we are allowing for that in the language we've provided. It is our recommendation that appeals be sent to another body besides the Transportation Committee. We don't feel that it is appropriate, nor is it in our best interest for us to be writing this language and then be judging people on the standards by which we've written. Therefore, we are recommending that the Board of Adjustments and Appeals be the body to which the sidewalk ordinance is originally appealed to. And I feel that we've done a pretty thorough job of creating a fairly straightforward and easy-to-understand process by which that variances may be granted.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Gafford, Mr. Turner, or Alderman Demus? Any questions or comments from the members of the board?
I got a couple of procedure on Section 3, on Page 3, permit requirement and installation. And I'll use it, for instance, in my neighborhood. The developer in my neighborhood requires each homeowner, as they build their house, to install the sidewalks. So, in other words, we're ready right now for the 85%. We're ready for the city to take over the infrastructure. But all the sidewalks aren't in because all the houses haven't been built. So, with this, the way it's written now would compel that developer
To finish the sidewalk.
To finish the sidewalks on unfinished lots.
That is correct.
Which would, they would not last.
Agreed. But the question then becomes, at what point do you set it so that, you don't want to maintain control of that street forever, because the street's going to become torn up? What point do you want to turn over the street? And the way this is defined is the street is not a street until it has a sidewalk. Therefore, you can't turn it over to the city until it's got a sidewalk.
But the, but I mean, it is illegal to bind a contract when you purchase a lot that says when you build the house, you have to put in a sidewalk. So, he's catching you over there, but...
Right. And I may have to call on Mr. Griffith to help out with this. This is old language from the beginning of the process, two years ago. The idea, as you can see, is to try to prevent the destruction of sidewalks due to construction. And I believe the discussion we had 24 months ago was that 85% is a pretty standard way in which these
It is taking, for taking over infrastructure. It is. I mean, it's just a major concern, the fact that, say, in our neighborhood, we've got five lots that aren't built on. If you put a sidewalk in front of those lots, and then somebody gets ready to build a house on it, they will not, they will not make it. So, that developer is now taking a burden of putting a sidewalk in. And granted, he's probably going to add it. But I mean, it's not even the developer, it's actually the homeowner. Those lots are owned by homeowners. So, you're putting additional cost on that homeowner to build a house that he's going to have to redo again.
Yes. At what point would you want the city to take over the street? At 100% buildout?
No, I mean, I think the residents are going to want 85. But I don't think a resident's going to want a sidewalk that gets torn up. I mean, you know, $3,000 doesn't seem for an individual homeowner, though. That's a lot of money to go back and redo.
I wholeheartedly agree. I'm not sure how to get around this. I'm basically asking you
Well, I mean, I think the developer in that case was proactive in requiring sidewalks. I mean, he required sidewalks, but he required it of the individual lot owner. And I think that's a positive way to do it.
Well, I mean, would you be recommending that we go back and amend the ordinance to say that in new developments, you don't put a sidewalk in residential development until you have a home there in new residential development?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would agree with that, I think. I'd have to look at it, but yeah. That's kind of what I'm getting at in that particular instance, is I wouldn't want to build a sidewalk until I had my house there.
Well, other than just the discussion we're having right now, the best I can tell you is we did not look at section, revise in Section 3.1, and I won't make a recommendation without the rest of the committee input on that.
Well, I think that our intention was that as, when we passed this ordinance, we wanted to be binding and legal for people like me, people in wheelchairs. We can't get up and down sidewalk lane, you know. We have straight ways to keep them turned over, keep them forward. I have felonies on concrete. It don't feel good. And our understanding was that any building built after this was adopted, had to have ADA sidewalk. That was our understanding. But we're having problem after problem that people want to get around sidewalk, period, adopted or not.
Is there any way, and maybe I'm just throwing this out there, is there any way that some type of temporary solution can be found on places that would basically have gaps in sidewalks in residential areas?
Well, let me ask you a quick
When, if you look at, if you look at that first sentence in there, and I know we're
talking about something that's, you know, that's old in this ordinance.
That's the way we get the other one.
It talks about sidewalks should be shown on all subdivision plats, and plans and installation shall be required prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy for each individual lot. Now, I'm assuming that before each CO was presented to those individual homeowners, they had sidewalks, correct?
They had to have sidewalks.
All right, so they, they were able to do that under, they were still legal under this ordinance at that point. Now, then you go down to the 85% buildout. Prior to acceptance of infrastructure facilities and roadways by the city, usually at 85% buildout, all required sidewalks and other public infrastructure improvements shall be completed by the developer. Have those roads, using Country Club of States, have those roads been presented to the city and accepted by the city?
They're going through that process now.
So, we still haven't accepted it. So, there's still a way in which before, because I'm of the opinion that, just as Jim's saying, I think the city should not accept a street until it is complete with sidewalks. Now, that may mean that the developer himself have to retain that as a private street until all lots are developed. And we, as the city, will not accept it until the proper infrastructure's in place.
Yeah, I mean, in our case, I would hope and think we would be, I mean, that neighborhood's been three years, you know, it's been approved four years ago. So, in our particular case, I would think we would be, I don't know if you'd call that grandfather, in our case, because
Well, but I think even though, even though you're not, I think you still are okay with this ordinance, given that you're still on private streets.
I know, but the developer doesn't, I mean, the residents of the neighborhood want it to be a public street. And I'm talking about for future developments, say, even our neighborhood, the developer has required by law, I mean, by, at closing, you had to sign documents to say you're going to have to put a sidewalk in.
But that takes care of the first sentence. So, you're fine there.
But there's the lots that haven't been built on, which 85% buildout means, I mean...
But will he present those streets to the city for acceptance prior to construction?
Prior to, yeah, there could be lots. Because he sold a lot to you, you may not want to build on it for three years or two years, so...
Or 40, like in my neighborhood. We have lots that are 40 years old that have never been built on.
So, that would put an undue, a burden on that developer that he didn't count on on the front end, because he had a written document that said that homeowner was going to put the streets in when they built the house. And we can delve into that at the next meeting. I mean, I just wanted to bring that to light, because that's a, I mean, that's a major issue for us.
Well, I think you've got a good point, though, because I, but I think from the city side, you know, obviously, we don't want to accept any street that is substandard from an infrastructure basis. So, I think that that fine line has to be
Sure. If I can make a quick recommendation on that, because we have not begun to look at that, and it's clearly something that is of interest, is there any, and this would be making, putting more work on our committee, is there any way that we could separate that issue from the issues that we have for us tonight and go back and perhaps go through this whole process again?
Yeah, I mean, well, we have a second public hearing, so I don't know that you can do it by the second public hearing, but
No, we can't, it's a second public hearing, but because we've got so many other issues to take care of, it almost seems like we might want to, and I hate to do this, but go through the process again, just looking specifically at that issue, so that we don't get bogged down and go through five public hearings on a single revision of the ordinance as we just went through with the
Sure. The other question I got is, in Section 10, request for variance, 10.1 says that everything should be submitted in writing to the Building Department for consideration by the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. And Ben is over, I mean, he's the liaison for the adjustments and appeals, but now under, under 10.3A, we say that following information shall be provided if the city engineer
Yes.
If the city engineer's not involved anywhere in the process, why would we want to bring him in at that point?
The issue is because in Section 10.3, we are looking, we are discussing engineering-related matters, the actual physical construction of the sidewalk, not site plans. We're looking, we're talking about sidewalk design, we're looking at drainage and putting in base and perhaps retaining walls and things of that nature. And it would just only be appropriate for the city engineer to be the person that's reviewing that documentation. Now, I believe we had some email exchange, Mr. Latimer and I did, on that exact issue, which is
I asked the same question.
And it has not been, I think we decided we would move forward without clearing that language up. I explained the reason why the city engineer's being involved in that process. The question becomes, how does that information get to the city engineer? And it sounds, to me, the way the ordinance reads, it sounds like as long as the proper documentation is being provided at the Building Department, then it becomes the Building Department's responsibility to pass that on to the city engineer.
Well, I mean, I'd rather have Ben handle everything, and if the engineer, if he deems the city engineer needs to be involved, then we can bring the city engineer in. But to add one more step to the process, just, to me, makes it more cumbersome.
Well, then, I would like to turn that question over to the city engineer and the city planner to ask them how they feel that this process should be handled.
And again, we can, we got
We have, we have multiple
I just wanted to
But I mean, maybe we don't do that, do that right now, but that's a question I'd like to turn over to them, since it's dealing directly with them, how best to handle it internally.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, gentlemen. And we'll now move to the public comment portion of the public hearing, and we'll do this in the same manner that we just conducted our previous public comment portion. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed amendment to sidewalk ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed amendment?
Hello, Mayor, members of the Board of Alderman, my name is Robbie Ward. I live in Ward 1. And I hesitated when I walked up here because I'm not sure if I'm in support of it or not. I'm in support of common sense and values that Starkville has. I urge you to support continuing the city's efforts to improve quality of life through a quality of life promoting sidewalk ordinance. This helps create an environment where people feel comfortable walking from their homes to businesses, to visit friends, walking to school or work, among the many other places people walk in the city. A good, common-sense sidewalk ordinance helps show citizens here and other places that Starkville encourages walking and a healthy lifestyle. It shows that Starkville values infrastructure that helps make this city a great place to live. I urge you to support a sidewalk ordinance that resists efforts, well, that resists efforts to jeopardize the integrity of having sidewalks throughout this community.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed amendment?
Jim McKell, Ward 5. I urge you to exclude the industrial areas from the sidewalk amendment or ordinance. Several reasons. Number one, industrial areas have heavy equipment moving across walks, destroying sidewalks if you put them in. Number two, the industrial area where the senior center is located is completely open drainage. open drainage. This means that you're going to have to, you know, put in piping and drainage, and those, that's for your street drainage as well as for the property drainage. The, the, the need for sidewalks in an industrial area, yes, it's not zoned industrial, but it, it is, uh, is really not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKell. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed sidewalk ordinance? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed amendment?
My name is Robert McMillan, I live in Ward 7, and first of all, I'd like to commend this board and previous boards on all the wonderful work you've done with sidewalks. Just looking around my neighborhood, I live on South Jackson, I'm always seeing construction with curb cuts. We have a little bit of ways to go. I came to this last year, not hearing, but the last board meeting to discuss this issue. Walked here with my daughter in her stroller, had to cross the road a couple of times because of telephone poles and whatnot, but we're getting there, and that Tiger grant that we wrote, maybe that'll help us get there. I'm excited about all the improvements, but I encourage the city and the board to continue to support this ordinance. I think we've done wonderful things. I moved to Starkville 10 years ago, moved back to Starkville as born here, and downtown was an eyesore. I mean, we just didn't have any vegetations, the sidewalks were cracked, we had no ramps, the stores a lot more interesting now. I think we've done a lot, I think this board has done a lot, and I encourage the board to continue to resist pressure to allow one variance, even if it makes superficial sense. I'm afraid that if we allow one variance, that just opens the door for many other requests, and at some point, that becomes very hard to subjectively give out, make these subjective decisions. So, I encourage the board to resist the temptation to give an order of variance to this specific senior project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed amendment? Got a couple of you.
Good evening, my name is Adam Turner, and I'm a victim of being struck by a vehicle hit and run in 2005. If I hadn't had this coat that I have on now, I'd probably have been dead. I was struck, broke the mirror on the passing side, was thrown into the yard. And I never will forget it, February 10th, 2005. We need to understand, everybody can't drive, everybody, it just, allow people disability, and you can't get people to do nothing for you. They charge your arm and leg, just do something for you. And then you have to look at, okay, we got our police officer. If they have to run a suspect down, you're putting them in danger if you ain't got a sidewalk, and then they wind up injured because you don't have sidewalk. Uh, fast, fair, right, right.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed amendment? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed amendment? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, my name is Mark Duncan, I live in Ward 1. I was glad to hear that Alderman, Dumas, and Parker and Carver spent time researching existing ordinances for the sign ordinance in order to gain some precedence and some best practices from other municipalities, and they put a lot of, I guess, a lot of weight into what other cities had done, what other ordinances had done for their, in developing their sign ordinance. And I would hope that they, that this board would take other ordinances that have been researched in putting together this sidewalk ordinance and apply the same weight to those as they applied to the sign ordinance. We have numerous examples of existing ordinances from other municipalities that do not allow variances except for topographical or hardship reasons, and I just ask that the board play, remember that when they go to make this decision, that they realize that they are best, best practices that exist from other municipalities.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Is there anyone wishing to speak against the proposed amendment?
Mayor, board, how y'all tonight?
Good.
Rudy Johnson, Golden Triangle Planning and Development District. I hear what's being said, but I don't understand why Starkville wants to make it difficult for businesses to create jobs and create wealth. All I'm asking is common sense, come and look. When you look at what's been built in the industrial park, from Southwire to GovStates, what you're talking about is not practical. It's not practical at all. And Mayor, at our last meeting, we talked about Mississippi roads and how they were built, and it took 30 years to build them. But the small caveat that was left out of that was that the Mississippi Legislature did bonds to pay for these roads. They didn't use private dollars, they used public dollars to pay for these, to pay for the roads that, that made the, the system that it is now. And one other point, the letter that I signed, Mr. Dumas, is a letter that Bethany wrote in support of the Tiger Grant, and I'm in favor of that. I'm in favor of Starkville. This is where I live. I put Starkville first, just like I said. You know, I was going to spend $700,000 with the people in Starkville. All I'm asking for is come and look and, and, and put your, and put your sidewalk system and see where it is and what it's going to do. I'm gonna build some sidewalks, if I ever build a building, for our people to walk on. It might not be where you want them or how you want them done, but we're going to do that. All I'm asking for is come and look and see what you're trying to do that one fit, one size does not fit all, that's what I'm asking for. I'm through.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed amendment? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed amendment? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
I'll speak, even though I usually leave this to my, my colleagues back there, Kathleen Hamby in Ward 5. I think one thing that we're forgetting in this issue is, a lot of things have been said that sidewalks, we need them to promote business and recreation and people to get out and be healthy, but one thing that we're forgetting is our underserved population that don't, that cannot afford cars but still have the opportunity to work, but need a way to get there. And a lot of those people may work in an industrial area or in our so-called industrial park, and they don't have transportation to get there but may be able to walk. And what we're wanting is for these people to have a safe way to get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamby. Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed amendment?
Michael Quees, Ward 5. I'm for sidewalks. I walk a lot, and I'm for them. I'm just curious, is there anywhere we don't want them? Are we gonna put them on Highway 12? The new part of Highway 12 is divided. Are we gonna put them around Highway 82 that is a limited access highway, almost to the, built to the standards of an interstate, where most interstates prohibit pedestrian traffic? If we put sidewalks along US 82 bypass, will US DOT come put a fence between it and the highway to protect, keep pedestrians off of that bypass? I don't know, is there anywhere that people will agree that maybe a sidewalk does not make sense? I like sidewalks, I like mass transit, I live in New, New York City, I saw how great it is. Mass transit's the answer to people who can't afford cars, not telling people, you're gonna walk. Our town is basically five miles on each side. You're gonna ask people to walk seven and a half miles from one corner to the other? So, we're gonna look out for the people who don't have cars, and I have friends from China and India and Russian bloc countries that don't have cars and don't want to buy them, but are forced to. So, I know how these people suffer. I had dinner with one Thursday, talked about it, and sidewalk's not the answer to that, mass transit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quees. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed amendment? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against the proposed amendment? Anyone wishing to speak against?
Can I just add, add a point?
Yeah.
The nearest sidewalk, the nearest continuous sidewalk to the Golden Triangle Planning and Development is 1.6 miles away. That sidewalk is two and a half feet wide.
Thank you, Mr. McKell. Anyone wishing to speak for, against, or indifferent to the amendment? Anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, y'all please approach when you make a comment.
We're working very hard to find ways to get public dollars and private dollars to get sidewalks everywhere. This is just one part of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gafford. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the proposed sidewalk ordinance amendment? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, that will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. We'll move back into comments by the members of the board. Aldman Carter.
I guess my opinion on this is one that's kind of been known from the start, but again, I, I'm not in favor of sidewalks in an industrial area. I know it's not industrially zoned, but, I mean, this gentleman's made excellent comments. It's pretty much how I feel about this particular incident, and you know that, I guess, all of this amendment has been brought before us due to Mr. Johnson's request and, and just kind of talking about the whole situation, you know, if, if Mr. Gafford can get the Tiger 2 grant, then Starkville may not look like, it won't look like what it looks like then, and I think that's, I commend you for working on that, and, you know, and I disagree on some things and agree on others, but, uh, he's done good work, he always goes and, and does what is requested of him and, and goes above and beyond, but I personally do not agree with sidewalks in the industrial area now. If you, uh, if Lynn Lane, at that time, I just can't make policy now for things that aren't existing. If Lynn Lane's bike path runs down and then the nearest sidewalk is within a quarter mile, I may have changed my mind then, but now I don't. In real estate, oftentimes, you hear location, 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 and this, I, I think we need to use that and realize that we do need sidewalks on Highway 12, and we do need them on 182, but, and we do need them in new, new residential areas, but as far as the industrial area right now, I'm, I'm not in favor of that. And, um, you know, look at the aesthetic beauty of what Starkville's gonna look like over these 30 years while it takes, you know, the sidewalks to connect, and, and it's kind of funny tailgating at the Memphis and State game before that, and nobody was talking about the game, it's out of town, or they were talking about the Waffle House, and I kind of had to fend that off, you know, why, why do y'all have one sidewalk out there? And I was actually in favor of that one. I said, you know, one day the bypass, we're planning on getting infrastructure needs out there, and then one day that'll connect to the, whatever dealership that is now beside, and one day that'll, but, you know, and that's a location issue, I'm in favor of Highway 12, but as far as an industrial area, I just can't support this the way it is. If we get Tiger 2, I may completely reverse my decision based on the information at that time, so... And also, Mr. Johnson, I know, I just want to publicly commend you for what you do and what your agency does, and I think you're very valuable to the city, and no matter what happens in all of this, uh, I mean, I, I hope you stay here and hope you, can you continue to provide the services, because you're well thought of and everything that you do for the city, so, yes.
Further comments by the members of the board? Are there? Aldman Carter?
Just one last thing about, I think we need to think about the pipe, and, I mean, I've heard a couple instances about the pipe and covering, but sidewalk...
We don't, we don't have a real good...
History of piping and covering, apparently, and this board, we don't have a policy about piping a ditch. So, anyway, I don't know if that needs to be taken up in here.
A general comment, y'all, y'all have had multiple issues to flesh out on this. One option that you have is you do not have to have a second public hearing at the meeting immediately following this. If, if you would like to go back to the drawing board and, and work on some things, you could call for a second public hearing at, at a later date when you've got some things fleshed out. But we'll leave that up to y'all. What I would ask for is if, if, if you want to do something other than the normal course, which is the second public hearing at the next meeting, please give me some indication so we'll know how to set the agenda. Aldman D.
I guess, and I just want to comment on the land use side, and, and I, and I know this has been talked about extensively in the, in the Transportation Committee meeting. From a land use perspective, I think if this were truly a, a heavy industrial zone, I think there would be considerable merit for that being in, in, an area in which sidewalks... I, I think there's a conversation there that could be had on the exclusion of sidewalks truly within a heavy industrial zone. We don't have that land use designation in the city of Starkville. We have a manufacturing land use. And as it currently stands, the manufacturing land use runs not only within the industrial park but goes to the, it goes to considerable parts of Highway 12. And I think all of us have seen the many pictures and depictions of people walking on Highway 12 and the problems that poses, because if we truly want to be a quality of life area that represents a college town that has significant portions of populations that are carless, living adjacent to the university, however our, as, as growth has taken our grocery stores, for example, down Highway 12, Highway 12 is one of those areas in which sidewalks have to be considered long-term. But unfortunately, if we look at it from a truly land use perspective of being exclusionary from excluding sidewalks or manufacturing areas, then there are considerable pieces of Highway 12 that are within a manufacturing land use, and so that would exclude those areas. So, then we get back into that framework of patchwork sidewalks. And as it currently stands within the industrial park, or what we're calling the industrial park now, there are quite a few office scenarios there, and I think it's unfair, I think from the allowable uses that we have within our manufacturing land use, it's hard to justify that we will allow office parks and we will allow other types of scenarios within a manufacturing land use, but we want to exclude sidewalks, because I think by and large, those are there. Like I said, from a true industrial park, I think there's a, there is a considerable justification for that being exclusionary zone for the sidewalks, but as it stands, we currently just don't have that. And, and I think with the zoning map the way it is now, if we did do a blanket statement in which sidewalks within manufacturing areas were excluded, that will take out other parts of the community in which we have considerable need and have had considerable conversation about sidewalks being there. So, I think we just need to really consider that when we talk about that.
Further comments by the members of the board? Any further comments by the members of the board? Any further comments? Any further comments? Any further comments? Seeing none, that will conclude our first public hearing on the sidewalk ordinance. Would y'all like to take a quick recess? Without objection, we'll move into recess. Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, without recess.
Hello, I'm Bill Green, TV Committee Chair for WOBV 5. In an effort to provide better service to you and your family, we have installed a new telephone line that will reach us whether we are in the office or away from the station. Our new number is 662-546-0510. Please call our station helpline anytime. If we're busy, please leave a message, and one of our staff will return your call just as soon as possible. Again, our new station helpline number is 662-546-0510. Thank you for watching WOBV 5, the station in the heart of the city.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibah County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
The meeting will now come back to order. The next matter we have on the, the agenda is the consideration of the approval of the contract amendment with Gary Schaefer for architectural services for the proposed municipal complex. And we had a, a, a pretty thorough and comprehensive presentation on this at the last meeting. Nothing has changed as far as the proposals you have before you since that meeting. What the city attorney has done... as the proposals you have before you since that meeting. What the city attorney has done is, rather than you having that information in various emails and other communications throughout the package you had, is he's distilled it into two complete proposed amendments that would effectively incorporate all the changes that have been discussed. And those two options are the two major options that were discussed at the last meeting. And that would be continuing the relationship with Gary under the rate that he originally contracted for, which was six and a half percent, or changing that structure to the logarithmic method, which is a complex mathematical formula intended to evaluate the value of architectural services due to size and complexity of the buildings. And more importantly, it is the standard for architectural fees that is used by the state on all state building projects. I've stated before, I prefer that mode, just because I think it's a more concrete standard. However, I'd be comfortable, either way, the board chooses to decide it. If the board is more comfortable with the relationship continuing as it has over the last eight years under the six and a half percent schedule, that works as well. But my personal preference is the contract amendment than as the Bureau of Buildings fee schedule. And Chris, would you like to walk us through the amendments?
Sure. And as the mayor said, nothing much has changed since the last meeting. You'll have two contract amendment documents before you. And if you look in the lower left-hand corner, they're numbered. One ends in 838 and the other ends in 839. In the 838 version, that is the Bureau of Building Fee Method Amendment. You'll see that on the second page under number 12, Article 151, which states that compensation will be computed according to the fee schedule set out by the Mississippi Bureau of Building, Grounds, and Real Property Management. And if you guys remember from last week, the way that works is the more the price of the building, the lower the architect's fees. Conversely, the lower the price of the building, the higher the architect's fee percentage. If it's a renovation, his fee percentage is higher. If it's new construction, it's lower. If it's a mega project, one big building, his fee would be lower than it would be if it was multiple structures, because he would get a higher percentage based on each one of those being smaller projects, a smaller dollar amount. One thing to note about the 838 document, if you look on the bottom of the first page, you see a list of consultants that are retained at the architect's expense. If you flip the page and look at point four, you see Pritchard Engineering or Civil Engineer work. If you guys choose to travel under the Building Bureau method, Pritchard's fees are also eaten by Schaefer and Associates, just like all the other consulting fees. Conversely, if you choose to travel under the 6.5% flat fee, the negotiated position is that those fees will be passed along to the city of Starkville. The 839 document just states the flat fee arrangement of 6.5% of construction cost. And then the only other thing we added is an indemnification provision, which appears as paragraph 15 on both documents, where Schaefer and Associates agrees to indemnify the city of Starkville and hold it harmless for any acts or omissions on its part that weren't done in connection with something that Starkville required Schaefer and Associates to do. So those are the amendments.
And Mr. Schaefer is here. If you have any additional questions for him as well. Aldman Carter.
I think from a planning standpoint, Bureau of Building would be better. This is my personal feeling. But I'm just asking, and you're pretty much the lone expert in here on all these figures, for, I'm just throwing a figure out there, say an $8 million project, with your best educated guess, which one would be more cost efficient for the city? I mean, what's the breakover price? I guess the reimbursable expenses is what is the major variable?
Reimbursable expenses would not change under either of the contracts. The, the, well, until we actually know how this project will unfold.
Yes.
It's very difficult to answer that. As I said, if it unfolds that there's one large, single project, that's all new construction, it would be to your advantage to have that at the BOB schedule. If it breaks out into smaller projects, it would be, again, depending on the nature of those projects, it would probably be to your advantage to be on the percentage.
What is the downside of determining this or deciding this after the feasibility study? Why does this need to be done beforehand? Is, I mean, this is something that we can sit back after, after we've done the studies and see which way that the group wants to go?
I guess the short answer is that's, that's his contract position in amending the contract. Because after you do the feasibility study, it would be clear, I guess, which way is less expensive for his services to be issued in terms of a fee. And Mr. Schaefer, I don't know if I'm correct, but you would not be comfortable after that's concrete, saying I'll take the lesser of the two fee structures.
I would be willing to do that.
With a guarantee that you get the work.
So that would, you could build in an option. And what I would suggest, if the board wanted to go that route, is to instruct, Chris, just to firm that up in the clause that says you would go with either the six and a half percent or the Bureau of Buildings, whichever is a lower fee structure for the city.
Go ahead.
By, if we adopted one of these contracts, and as far as your consultants, the mechanical structural, if we adopt this, does that, this is probably who you normally use?
Yes, these are the engineers I worked with for 15 years or more.
Do you mind telling me, just like, say, MJR Center, where are they based at?
They're in Birmingham. And, but practice extensively in Mississippi. They do all of our work in Mississippi.
And John Rice?
John Rice is in Jackson.
Structural design group is in, where are they?
Structural design group is based out of Nashville.
Would you give any consideration to at least looking at some local, local engineers or local firms? I know, I realize that's who you work with, and that's probably.
Fifteen years is a pretty good record. I think what we're most pleased about is the quality of service we've delivered as a team. And I think that's, that's something that's beneficial to our clients.
Further discussion. Aldman Davis.
I think it's important, and I really appreciate what Mr. Schaefer's doing. You know, the fact that, that he's a professional, the fact that he's an academic, and the fact that he's, he's willing to, to take this contract on in an effort to, to really work with us on the feasibility study at no cost. And I see that as a great cause, I really do. As I did last week, I'm going to make a motion. But I want to, I do want to, is, can I reference, I like Aldman Carter, I definitely want the Bureau of Building contract, with Pritchard being a part of the contract and the reimbursables as stated. And you're comfortable with those reimbursable clauses? With, and I guess, as you mentioned, neither changed. And I see the multiplication of, of one time. I mean, these are just flow-through reimbursables as typical standards.
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Can I reference this contract to 669-838, or is there another way that I need to reference this? Or just Bureau of Building schedule?
Now, one thing of note is, he did state that he would be willing to take either the six and a half percent or the Bureau of Building schedule after the feasibility study. He would be willing to take whichever one results in the lesser fee.
Right. But I, but I, I'm comfortable enough with the Bureau of Building schedule to, at this point, go ahead and make a motion on that. I mean, I think that's a proven technique. I think it's something out of respect to the professionalism of any architect at this point, that that's something that we need to consider here, and the fact that that's a proven technique and, you know.
Yeah, if that's the motion you want to make, then you just want to move to approve that document.
Identify.
And I think anybody can argue, and I can argue this as working with the Bureau of Buildings, you know, they're not out to pad the pockets of any architect in the state. You know that as working with the Bureau. So that algorithm, I'm very comfortable with. So reference it 669-838?
Correct.
So I, there's no need to reference the Bureau of Building aspect of it.
Why would you not, though? Why would you not have that option?
Of what? The lesser fee?
Yeah.
I guess you could, but I think with all variables considered, I think there's, I guess, having been a, being a landscape architect, I think I'm sympathetic to the cause of a professional coming and doing these services to the standpoint they are and using a proven tactic in the standpoint of, you know, and obviously, I understand the budget is tight and every, but, but I don't think we're missing out a lot from the standpoint of really jumping the gun on solidifying a contract in the standpoint of a 6.5 versus the Bureau algorithm.
But on an $8 million project, that could be, what, $8,000?
I don't know.
I think that would come.
You look at that formula, it really, it gets so complex, depending on the different variables, you know, different types of construction that it might require, different sizes of buildings. It really is impossible.
So as for feasibility study, we would kind of know what direction, what direction would be best to go. That's, that's the point of the feasibility study?
Well, certainly, the feasibility study is going to produce what we hope will be
your desires and which direction you'd like to go. And then, when you agree this is the direction you'd like to go, we would be able to have a budget associated with whatever that is. But say, the budget for one large building would be different than the budget for three other buildings. And so the three other, let's just use that as an example. Three other buildings might need to be built one after the other after the other, as opposed, you know, because you might have to move people around and things like that. So that's why, I think fee-wise, it's so difficult to predict at this point. We are under contract under both of these fees. So as generous as I may sound, they, you know, either one is a contract method that we're already working. So I feel comfortable with either, either of those. And as I feel you should feel comfortable with either of those. It's my understanding that we were going to try to tie this contract down and to move on, and this was a point that we needed to get tied down. So I believe that's what got us to where we are right now.
So if we had a overall feasibility study that showed three or four buildings, and we chose to do one this fiscal year, and then come back two years later and do another, that would actually be an addition rather than a new construction?
And each of those would be separate. Construction contracts, then.
Right.
So from the Bureau of Fee Schedule, the advantage of that is your new building would be under a new building contract, your renovated building would be under renovated contract.
Right.
And they would just move down the line as they unfold.
But the one thing that explained to me, am I saying it right, the slide scale with the BOB?
That's a good.
And that's good enough. I mean, depending on, the more expensive of the project, the less the percentage that your firm would make on the project.
That's correct.
Correct. So until we know, under direction from the feasibility study group, as to the size and complexity, then, you know, the BOB is not the greatest, best option. And I just commend you tonight for stepping ahead and realizing that, you know, you'll do whatever it takes to get this built. And if you can pass any kind of cost savings to the, to the public, and whether it is $30,000 or $50,000, that's, that's money saved, you know, depending upon which direction the feasibility study, which has not been conducted, whenever it is conducted. So I mean, I think you're putting the cart in front of the horse. BOB is the only other option if you're going to do that tonight. I mean, you know, if you're willing to take that stance, and you said you have, then I think that we need to hear the motion that the city attorney has drafted. And if, I guess, Bureau of Buildings, is that correct? The Bureau of Building is more of a blanket. I know, I can understand how that is a standardized approach, but I think in this instance, you know, I can see that you're really willing to get out there and help Starkville however you can and get this project done. So I'd at least like to hear, hear the city attorney's motion that have you been working on.
No, one, my job to craft a motion, it was to give you guys the two contract amendments that you could work off to craft a motion or come up with your own motion. What Jeremiah Dumas has contemplated is making a motion based on this document, based on the Bureau method.
Right.
Or you guys could make another motion and just cite that the fee would be contingent upon either the BOB method or 6.5 method, whatever yielded the lowest percentage based on the feasibility study.
Discussion. Aldman Carter.
I had a few questions. One, first one was legal one, just making sure that we're okay on that. Because we're amending an existing contract, does that then negate the need to bid or anything else out because we're talking about changing scope of work and payment and everything else? I just wanted to.
Yes, we're covered on two grounds, and the fact that the first contract is still in effect. And so we're just changing scope and we don't have to broaden that. Number two, since this is a professional service, you're not obligated to bid that out anyway.
Okay. And I had just a few quick questions for you, Mr. Schaefer. Do you still intend to use the Brinkley-Sargeant study as sort of a guideline as you go along in this, as regards to the needs, needs assessment feasibility?
I'm anticipating that would be in the packet to the committee that I'm assuming I'll get assigned if I get this. And so, and then it's totally up to them to proceed however they feel comfortable.
Because that was released, I guess, what, five or six years ago, do you foresee the possible need to go back and readjust the figures in that, that study?
And I've already made a commitment to the mayor and the chief that I would update theirs and the courts and bring that document up to date. But as I said at the last meeting, it's remarkably accurate as how well it's been tracking and its prediction of the future.
Okay. And then also, I know in the early discussions regarding this building, really dealt with just the police and court. So now, I know one of the things that will be looked at is police and court versus police and court and city hall. Do you have any basis for how you think you might go along with the, coming up with the needs for the city hall, since we already have at least some studies for the other?
I actually have already produced the needs assessment for the city hall, I don't know, a couple months ago, I believe, I produced that document, working with all of the department heads and employees of the city, and have a needs assessment that fills in that gap. So you now have the three groups that we're going to be looking at.
Okay.
Aldman Davis, just a couple comments, and then I'll move forward. On the back page of your, your staff recommendation or your, the thing in our board packet, I want to draw your attention, you know, at a 6.5% flat fee, no cost, are all percentages of the Bureau and, the Bureau of Building schedule on the new construction phase are less than that percentage. So regardless of it being a $5 million, $10 million, $15 million project, personally, I think we're above the $5 million stage. That was $5 million 10 years ago, just for Brinkley-Sargeant Police Report, is that correct? Or the, the court and police complex. So even at 10%, or a $10 million project, the Bureau of Building is a 6% fee. So that's half percent below what the six and a half percent would be. Now, the renovated project obviously is a little more expensive just because of the nature of renovated work. So the, the six and a half percent fee would be, you know, on a $10 million project would be 0.4% less. So as far as new construction goes, anything we do from the Bureau of Building standpoint will be less than the 6.5 flat fee. If we do any renovation from the standpoint of renovation of existing buildings, all those fees will be, I guess, unless we get above the $15 million, you know, and up. So if we do that, then we're in a whole different ball field. No, you know. All right. So just wanted to draw your attention to that. Lead, as you know, we have a mandate from the city that, that all new facilities will be lead. And we've got a great example. We have commissioned it. You're looking at me. Ms. Sproule's looking at me kind of odd back there. Is that, am I speaking untrue there? Okay. But just wanted to make sure that we as a community understand that, you know, or from my standpoint, that that's obviously a goal of what I hope this community or this new building will be from the standpoint of hopefully lead silver. I'd love to have a lead platinum building. But obviously, that's part of this process.
I would be happy to have the fee on that also. I would be happy to have the fee on that also.
Well, that's... As city policy goes, that is a policy. All right. With all that being said, I'm going to make a motion. Get the right thing on here. I move approval of the contract with Schaefer and Associates for Architectural Services for the proposed City of Starkville Municipal Complex with compensation based on Contract Amendment Number 669-838.
Alderman Dumas has made a motion, which is previously stated, but I'll paraphrase, to approve Contract Amendment Number 669-838 as presented. Is that your motion, Alderman Dumas?
It is.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Parker. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Discussion. Any discussion? Alderman Carter.
I'm a little lost on the back page and I may change my opinion. The way I'm reading this, anything under $10 million, under the B O B is less expensive for the city. And if you want to look at this?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll look on Ms. Sanders. What I, you know, two total cost figures for a $10 million project or less on the bottom have...
That is correct.
And then your actual turnaround point is anything between the 10 and $15 million range, it'd be cheaper to do the... Well, anyway, it'd be cheaper to do B O B.
That's correct.
New construction.
New construction one.
So do the phases count as new construction if we did it in three phases?
Yes, each, in other words, each would be a separate contract because it would be essentially a separate building if they... Turned out that it wasn't one big building somewhere.
Unless they were obviously renovations.
Unless they came into this building and renovated.
Yeah, we could renovate this building, their electric apartment, and who knows what. I mean, they're...
And that's where you go over the 6.5 percent if we go into renovations.
Right. Renovations.
See, it's so close either way. It's... That's why I felt I'm comfortable with either direction. I just don't... Since I can't predict the future either, it's just not going to be quite that much difference one way or the other. There are some permutations that would make a difference, but kind of stuff in the middle is all... And that's how that number came up in the first place. We debated this eight years ago, the same direction, and that administration was more comfortable with the fixed fee, and that's how we set it. And this administration's more comfortable with the Bureau. That's fine also. It really matters not to me.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll now move into vote on Alderman Dumas's motion, which is to approve of the proposed Contract Amendment as presented Number 669-838. And that is the right number.
Correct.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure passes. I'll tell you what. Still, one more time because I didn't hear a lot of voice. I don't usually do this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. All right. I've got a unanimous vote. Measure passes. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. And we're anxious to get started whenever given our charge.
The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of advertising for request qualifications for a traffic evaluation and right-of-way study for South Montgomery Street. Alderman Parker?
Yes, I just wanted to... I've been working with Edwards for several months now and just trying to come up with a way that we could at least start the ball rolling on this. I know we've been trying to do this for many, many years because we have some major, major traffic congestion problems on South Montgomery, particularly between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. This is just a way to actually... This is only a... We're only approving to advertise for request qualifications, which would give us the price for an engineer to study South Montgomery, to tell us what would be the best solution, and also do a right-of-way study while we're doing that, to know exactly how much right-of-way we have and what our options are. So that's just... This is just the, I would hope, would be a first, very simple step into something that may progress over many years to come. But we've got to start the ball rolling somewhere, and that's why we've kind of started it with this RFQ.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in support of this request. I have always been in support of trying to find ways to improve the situation on South Montgomery. And I'm also in favor of supporting any request that the residents of any area desire. So this would be consistent with what I've been trying to do. I think it's a great proposal. It's very congested, very tight, and any way we can help that area out will be good. And from prior board meetings, this is something that the residents feel strongly of, and I'm certainly in support of supporting the residents of that area. And I'll support the motion if it's made.
We do have no motion pending.
Mayor, I move we advertise for requests for qualifications for a traffic evaluation and right-of-way study for South Montgomery Street.
Second. Alderman Parker has made a motion to advertise for request qualifications for a traffic evaluation and right-of-way study for South Montgomery Street. Alderman Parker, is that your motion? And has it been seconded by Alderman Parker? Alderman Parker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Discussion. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of amending the City of Starkville Sign Ordinance Number 2008-10 and the City of Starkville Code of Ordinances to provide for expanded enumerated users for city right-of-way guidelines and permitting processes for said users, amortization of non-conforming signs, and other minor revisions and clarifications. Discussion.
The only thing at this time that gives me small pause is the amortization schedule. I haven't quite reconciled the amortization schedule and the cost that that puts on some of the businesses.
It is a long-term factor.
It is.
I guess one comment and I'll make the motion before, so that we can get to other discussion if need be. My key like of the amortization part is the fact that we have such a... And I'll use Highway 12 and I'll pick on it. We have such an eyesore on Highway 12 where there are so many non-conforming signs within a given area. And those are well-established businesses. Those are some well-built signs as you look at them. And so I think if we really want to move the city forward from the standpoint of... From the aesthetic side of helping this ordinance really have the teeth needed, I think the amortization part is the only part that's needed. I think the chief spoke well on it. And I think other communities have shown success in offering this. And sure, it is a burden to businesses, but I think it's something that... Really, there's no other way around from the standpoint of bringing the community as a whole around the central idea of how this thing works. With that, I make the motion to approve proposed ordinance amendment amending the City of Starkville Sign Ordinance Number 2008-10 and the City of Starkville Code of Ordinances, which has been reduced to writing as provided by staff.
Alderman Dumas has made a motion to approve the proposed... To approve proposed ordinance amending the City of Starkville Sign Ordinance Number 2008-10 and the City of Starkville Code of Ordinances, which has been reduced to writing as provided by staff. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Parker. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Any discussion? Any... Alderman Carter.
Some things I want to be brought to public knowledge, and my main catch with this is the amortization due to the fact that you're telling an individual or a small business owner that they have to dig into their own pockets, pay for a sign renovation that's not necessary and has actually no direct benefits for their business. Let's say you owned a business on Highway 12, like Mr. Lindley. If I came to you after seven years and said that, you know, your sign was not... And your sign's in compliance. But if your sign was non-compliant and you required, because seven years ago, the previous board said you had to take this sign down, you know, I think that's just... That's a right of somebody of a small business owner that they should not have to comply by. And if that's their sign, Christie's is a great example, the sign's been up there for some time. And that's not... That's not making a, you know, making or breaking their fact that they can conduct business. But if you do that, it's just going to... It's going to drive business away. I mean, yeah, I think start... I think Highway 12 is an eyesore, but at the same time, you're taking away business owners' rights, you know, and that's just not pro-development. It's not anything to do with economic development. Second is... The only two reasons I can't vote for this as it is is the enforcement. It says on Page 19 in the enforcement segment that the revocation of a privileged license is due for the individual... Let's say an individual has 10 businesses they rent out on Highway 12 and anywhere. And if the tenant decides not to be in compliance with the city after their privileged license is taken, not only is that license taken away from that individual, but then the property owner is made to pay those delinquent fines. And again, that's just... That's not that business. That's not that property owner's fault that the person they rented to chose not to be in compliance. So again, that's passing on a burden that somebody that wasn't even... Really didn't have that much to do with the situation in the first place. I just think that's absurd. And so, you know, the whole amortization and enforcement on this is a little over the top. I mean, I think something needs to be done. The rest of this language in this ordinance is pretty good. I mean, I think that the rest of it is good. It's going to have uniform looks and things I want to say, even though I agree with them. The subdivision signs, they'll now be at an eight-foot maximum. The monument signs, everything up and down the highways that advertise for a business, a brick or masonry, they'll be an eight-foot maximum. Multitenant signs are 12 feet. Bypass signs, which is a new, basically a new word that we made up, was... Well, that's not... It's any highway that's anything over 55 miles an hour, so I guess that applies to the bypass. They'll have a maximum of 20 feet. Everything will be five feet instead of eight feet off the road, a little closer. The directional signs, which we discussed earlier tonight, you can have two off-site signs, six square foot maximum. Political signs, you can't have a permanent structure. I think there's a couple in town that'll put them in a permanent structure into billboards and, you know, you shouldn't be able to do that. And then churches, they will. Churches will have the right to put signs on their grounds for any kind of revival or anything they're doing. So again, that's just, you know, when you get into amortization, you're sitting there telling a man that he has to dig into his pocket. CVS, Walgreens, Wendy's, they might not have a problem with that, but six and a half, seven years from now, you know, small business owners in this town are going to have a... I see some folks being upset when it comes time that they have to start, you know, basically replacing non-conformant signs that a previous board... And I know the next board, but you know, if you were to do an amortization, I would think you'd be more in favor of doing it now where this board dealt with the consequences it put on individuals and not... You know, none of us may even be in office then, so I guess that won't affect us that much, but you know, I'm just... But I mean, really, that's the amortization. I've got a main... That's my main, that and the enforcement are my two main catches with this one.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll now move into a vote. Let's take this one by roll call. Please answer yea, nay, or abstain on Alderman Dumas's motion, which is to approve the written copy of the sign ordinance amendment that you have before you.
Alderman Carter?
Nay.
Alderman Sistrup?
Yea.
Alderman Parker?
Nay.
Alderman Corey?
Yea.
Alderman Dumas?
Yea.
Alderman Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn?
Nay.
By vote of three in favor with four against, measure fails. We'll now move back into general discussion on the proposed sign ordinance amendment. Any discussion?
I guess from the standpoint of amortization, the enforcement side of things, I guess to speak to Alderman Carter's, just to continue discussion on that. The enforcement side of things, I... From a commercial business entity standpoint, I don't see, from a multi-tenant aspect, I don't see the responsibility being anywhere but the landowner because ultimately, when the lease is signed and the contract is signed, that property owner is ultimately responsible for what happens in those businesses. Obviously, there is a leasing contract that is signed and agreed upon, but as the property owner, the enforcement from the city is, I think, it has to go to the property owner of who's on the tax roll, of who we as a city hold responsible. Yeah, I don't want to beat a dead horse with the amortization part, but I think as we looked at this and I've looked at this, I think, you know, we've had so many conversations about the fact that... And you hear all the time. And I see this as, from a community standpoint, of signs from a visual standpoint are the things that make the biggest impact on first impressions when you go in and out of a community all over the country. And one of the first recommendations, and I know we've referenced Jeremy Murdock and the Community Action Team, and one of the first things that they do is recommend visual sign standards and the fact that you have to have some structure in place that not only new businesses going forward have the proper signs, but you have a way in which established community or established businesses come into conformity. And I think, you know, I find it hard to go against what's been proven in so many different communities as a way to bring businesses. And it hasn't been detrimental to the business. And I think research probably shows on the opposite side where a visual uniformity and that's aesthetically pleasing is actually better for business than it being a detriment to our business from the standpoint of signs having to come into conformity. I struggle on the opposite side of that of realizing that, yes, moving forward, it's good for us to have a standard, but how do we bring Highway 12 into conformity? You know, are other areas in the community that are so visually, and I'll say visually blighted from the sign standpoint, because I think they are, and I've got pictures to prove it, and we all see it. But I see no better of an opportunity than to be able to do that so that in seven years... I mean, yeah, we went above and beyond Ridgeland and Hernando in this standpoint. They offered five years.
Or sliding scale based on the value.
And some of them did a sliding scale based on value, that if it was over $20,000, you only had just a few years, correct? You know, seven years is a good bit of time for these businesses to go ahead and do this. So, you know, it's a proven tactic. It's helped community. It's something that's being done all over the country really to bring community standards visually into the standpoint of it meeting what the city sees as their idea. And I think we're, you know, we're embarking on a standard here where we go into a Main Street, Charette, and other type things to where I think we will be overwhelmed by the graphics in which those types of showing streetscapes on Highway 12 and them immediately saying the first thing you have to do is bring your signs down. I mean, I can tell you as a planner and a landscape architect, when I go work in a community, that's the first thing you do is you doctor a photo shop. You doctor a photo and you bring the signs down. And, you know, it's easy to say moving forward, we'll do that, but without amortization, I just don't know how we can get to that standard without a requirement for other businesses to come into conformity that are... Like I say, you know, some of these businesses are well-established and will be here long beyond any of us on this board. And without a trigger in there, they'll still be those things that we all see as...
And that would be for more. I mean, if we needed to look at the trigger, to be stricter on the trigger. Right now, you said it's 50 percent if they do 50 percent work of the work.
That's pretty much a standard for any type of non-conformity. That's pretty much a standard for anything in the building, you know, in the building code. That 50 percent rule is pretty much a standard in a lot of different areas.
Can I say something first, please? Highway 12 has grown up over decades. Most of the signs that exist on Highway 12 are from when it was a highway and not a thoroughfare in town. So you have those really tall pole signs, which for a consumer, doesn't really work. There are businesses on Highway 12 that I did not know were there, although they've got those giant pole signs, because I'm not looking up when I'm driving on... I'm driving on Highway 12 anymore. My eye level is more pedestrian level now. So, these are signs that are there because they were there thirty years ago. They're not there because they bring business to those locations. Most of the kind of things that Alderman Dumas were talking about show that any sort of facade change, where you improve appearances, can increase revenues to a business by ten percent or more, just with a facade change, not changing your product, just changing the way your business looks, where, where you have a more attractive product. So, while it will indeed take some money out of a business's pocket to make these sort of changes, it benefits the business in the long term, and I think this would benefit our community as well.
Further discussion? Alderman Carver?
Well, just from your planning background, what do you do, do you have community activism? What do you do to incorporate the aesthetic look you're talking about without amortization? Is there another option?
No, because then it's a...
Is just forcing someone to do something that...
Because there's, I mean, the, the city has no other right or, or option in which to go into a personal property and do anything. I mean, it's, it's the, it's the property owner's standpoint, and I'd, and from another perspective, there's, there's an issue of fairness here, too, you know, and we have so many different businesses that may potentially pop up on Highway 12, and we have no mechanism, you know, they come in, well, you Citizen Bank, for example, you know, you put that sign on there for Citizen's Bank, which is, and I, I guess that's Citizen's on the corner of, you know, the one you talked about with the, uh, across from Bob's. You know, they, they, they went above and beyond the standard needed at that time for a sign, to do a sign that's aesthetically pleasing. Um, and let's say there's five other organizations that move on Highway 12 and do those same type of signs, but yet, you know, fifteen years from now, there's still, those signs are intermingled with these huge towering pole signs that, um...
That you don't see?
That you don't see.
And another thing to consider on this is, uh, there, there is a fairness aspect, because pole signs are prohibited for new businesses. Uh, so, everybody that, that, that comes in, uh, and, and does not work with an existing sign, is it a competitive disadvantage to somebody that has an existing, uh, pole sign?
Further discussion?
Any further discussion on this issue? One last point before we leave the discussion.
Well, I just had a question. I know that the amortization was a very contentious issue on this, but there were some other changes to the ordinance in addition to that section. Is this something, then, that we might want to come back with, say, some, some of these points made tonight taken into consideration? I mean, do we want to lose all that work that was put into the rest of your...
Well, one, one point that that segue isn't as nicely that, uh, that I'd like to make is, uh, a, an urgent and pressing issue you, you have associated with, uh, the, the sign ordinance as it stands, is it, it currently does not allow for directional signs, uh, that are common throughout the city, uh, that different organizations, churches predominantly put up, period. Uh, so, uh, if, if no action is taken and there's, there's no plan for future action, then, then that is the, the law of the city.
Alderman Vaughn?
We need to modify eighteen and twenty. We got to do something with that before we pass it. We got to do something with some enforcement in the organization before we pass it.
I guess, potential action. There's certainly potential for no action, uh, there's potential for considering another motion. There's also potential for referring this back to the ad hoc committee that's been working on it. Uh, I would suggest action of some sort. Alderman Corey?
Mayor, I move that discussion of this ordinance be moved back to the ad, sign ordinance committee for, um, being brought back to the board.
Alderman Corey has made a motion to refer the proposed sign ordinance amendment back to the ad hoc, uh, sign ordinance committee. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Corey, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Alderman Corey's motion to refer this to the ad hoc sign committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
All right, I have it as six in favor with Carver against. Any other opposition? All right, this measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is an update on the status of Carver out there. Mr. Kim?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. We completed the two sections of pipe, put in forty feet. Still have a little bit of cleanup and, uh, get the vegetation established. We will not close out the project till everything's completed per specifications, but the majority of the, of the work has been completed.
Questions, comments, members of the board? Any questions, comments? Any questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Kim. The next matter on the agenda is the request for approval of the job description for the head of the City of Starville Electric Department and authorization, authorization to advertise the board's position. Mr. Boyd?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Much to our regret, this gentleman at my right has decided that he, uh, no longer wishes to keep our company, and has chosen to retire effective at the end of October. With that being the case, we do need to move forward on, uh, starting the process of selecting a replacement. Uh, one of the things that we need to do to do that is finalize the job description. The current job description for this position is about, uh, roughly three sentences, in my opinion, needs to be updated. I have given you a, a proposed job description. Um, I, I would like to request that we finalize a job description and also authorize the advertising of the position. Uh, my recommendations for advertising, considering cost of advertising in print media, uh, I would recommend that we do our standard, um, advertising in, in local print media, uh, and that we use electronic media with both Monster and TV PPA websites for advertising. Uh, TV PPA would be at no cost, Monster would be at cost of a hundred and fifty dollars. When you compare that to ads in larger newspapers such as, uh, Jackson or Birmingham or Memphis, looking at probably, uh, five to eight thousand dollars for advertisements in, in those papers. So, I guess first we should look at the job description.
Okay.
I have presented, uh, the job description for your consideration.
Mr. Hattaway, I guess first and foremost, I want to thank you for everything you've done. Um, having, you know, only having been here a year, I've, I've learned to respect what you've done, and I appreciate all you've done for the Starville Electric Department, so.
Good pleasure.
I see no issue with this, other than I do want to add two items to this under, as listed as eighteen and nineteen. I've reduced these to writing, I will read it. But, but this is, by and large, um, in response to the changing nature of what TVA's doing with variable billing, with their green power switch programs, with some of the things that I know Mr. Hattaway's seeing and, and we're seeing from the university side. Um, I guess it would be fair to say the electric, uh, the electric world is changing, uh, and I, I think, uh, Randy, I think you've done a great job with this job description. I think we need to do this with all department heads, obviously, would have specific descriptions, but I'll read this as it stands to amend what, uh, Randy has prepared. Eighteen, uh, as number eighteen, this would be, uh, understands, evaluates, and helps implement sustainable activities such as energy efficiency measures, smart metering, and other TVA activities such as the green power switch program, variable billing, and other non-traditional energy management or use activities. And then number nineteen would be, works in conjunction with the sustainability coordinator and office for all sustainability efforts, and obviously that is Mr. Kim. So, um, I've reduced those down, and those are the only two amendments I have.
Alderman Dumas has made a motion, which is reduced to writing, and, uh, since it is a long one, I, I'll reread it. Uh, that is to add, uh, an eighteen and nineteen, uh, to the essential job functions, and eighteen would be understands, evaluates, and helps implement sustainable activities such as energy efficiency measures, smart metering, and other TVA activities such as the green power switch program, variable billing, and other non-traditional energy management use activities. And nineteen is works in conjunction with the sustainability coordinator and office for all sustainability efforts. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Corey. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Alderman Carver?
I fully agree with everything Alderman Dumas said. Do you know any other websites which just, you know, do the complexity of this, that are just electrically, you know, electrical located, besides the TV PPA? Maybe something else we can try?
You might try the, uh, American Public Power Association website, APPA. That's the only one I can think of right now.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Perkins?
Uh, does this motion include the salary that's being recommended by the personal officer?
Mr. Boyd?
Uh, it, it is included in my motion.
Well, the motion that you have before you is, is just to amend, uh, the, the document.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
So, so, I just want to be sure.
Yeah, yeah, it's nothing but those two provisions that I just read, yeah. And then you have that document as amended to consider after that.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman Vaughn?
Mr. Boyd, will you consider that website that, uh, Mr. Hattaway just gave me?
Sir, sir.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Uh, back to general discussion on the job description for the Electric Department.
So moved as amended.
Alderman Dumas has made a motion to approve of the, um, description for the general manager of the, job description for the general manager of the Electric Department as presented and as amended. Alderman Dumas said your motion?
It is.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Carver. Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Perkins?
Uh, the motion says that it's to approve the job description. I, I think you had referenced earlier that this motion would include the, uh, the, the starting salary. So I think the motion needs to be clear that it not only approves the job description, but also sets the, uh, range for the starting salary. That's why I want to ask that question initially, because it's contained in, in the job description. I just want to make, make sure we're clear on it.
As, as well as the approval for advertising.
Right, that's correct, and all that, I just want to make sure.
Okay, now, the current motion does not, uh, contain that.
Yeah, yeah, as, as presented in the board packet.
Okay, so, so you were intending the motion to be, uh, everything is presented in the board packet?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, so the, the motion contains everything that's in this document?
Yeah.
All right.
Approval of the position and salary grade nineteen, the board's approval of advertising local, uh, newspapers, TV PPA website, and Monster, and the job description.
But it says in this document, the actual salary will be determined by the board based on qualifications and experience.
But placed in salary grade nineteen.
Right, there we've been here.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
All right, I have Perkins against and six in favor. Is there anyone else that was against? Measure clearly passes. And Mr. Hattaway, again, uh, you, I'm sure you'll hear this a lot over the next, uh, month and a half, but, uh, we do thank you for a lifetime of service to the city and a, a job well done.
Do the contracts next, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and, and you can stay seated, because I actually jumped our agenda. We, we had a modification on the agenda, and, uh, that was, uh, the addition you had of E2 on page five of your agenda under electric, and, uh, Mr. Hattaway came into my office this, this afternoon with an urgent matter, and that is, uh, the, the request for authorization of contracts, uh, with Southwire that need to be executed before October, uh, first. And the city attorney has reviewed these documents, uh, and, and it said there are no legal red flags. Mr. Hattaway?
Uh, I, we've, we've had these documents with Southwire for several weeks now, uh, and, uh, they have signed the documents, uh, and we received, I received them yesterday afternoon, and as, as the mayor feels, uh, have to have the contracts signed, uh, and to TVA, uh, by October the first. And what these documents actually do is really two different type of documents in this. One, uh, two of them are, uh, it's, uh, replacing, uh, two identical programs that TVA has that will be expiring on October one. Uh, that's five MR and the TD-HUD contracts. Uh, we also have a new power, uh, contract, uh, because Southwire's, uh, demand, KW demand requirements have increased, so that it necessitates a, a new power contract. And, uh, with that, that also goes back to the hour, uh, use of demand contract. And, uh, at this time, I'm asking the board to authorize the mayor to sign these documents.
Southwire, like you said, has reviewed them, they've signed them, that they're in agreeance with everything.
Yes.
The city attorney has reviewed...
Yes, no legal red flag.
Alderman Corey?
Well, um, given the importance, the time-sensitive nature of it, and the fact that the city attorney has, in essence, given us his, you know, approval of this, I, I will support this, but I kind of do want to use this as a moment to reiterate the same concern I made at the last meeting about coming in, sitting down, and, and having a thirty, forty-page document that I'm supposed to, in essence, put my name on to. I'm not directing that at you directly, I'm just saying, just in general, I hope that we as a city can move away from that, avoid that.
Well, this was something that was totally unexpected. We, we felt like they would have plenty of time to look the documents over, but as things do, they, they, it was slow in, in getting back to us, and now we're faced with a, with a deadline and, and only one board meeting to do it.
Right. That said, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign TVA SED electrical power contracts with Southwire Incorporated.
Alderman Corey has made a motion to authorize the mayor to sign TVA SED power contracts with Southwire as presented. Alderman Corey, said your motion?
It is.
Did I hear second?
Right.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Corey, do you wish to speak on the merits?
Do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Thank you, Mr. Hattaway. The next matter on the agenda is the request for approval of the lowest and/or best, uh, bid for twenty-five-yard rear-loading sanitation truck. Ms. Boyd?
Good evening, Mayor, vote of Alderman. Alderman Parker, Mr. Baylock, and myself have worked diligently on getting the bids out to purchase to lease two twenty-five-yard refuge rail loaders. And I'm here to, tonight, requesting that you accept and approve the best bid on the two twenty-five sanitation rail loaders.
Would you like to explain a little further?
Well, uh, you're looking at the track that I gave you here. A few points to consider on the war of the garbage trucks. Uh, the minimal is the money part. Uh, it's five hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty cents. That's the lowest bid, uh, with the Samson. There's a, uh, difference in delivery time, which is two months for Waters and five months for Samson. Uh, the wire, service for wires will be done in Columbus, Mississippi, and the service will be done for Samson and Tupelo, Mississippi. If you will look on the front also... If you will look on the front also, well, you don't have this information, but the APR has a lot to do with it also. You have a 3.9, three years for Waters, which is what we really basically need is a three-year purchase-to-lease contract, no longer. The APR for Sampson is 3.26% for 60 months. Anything else, Mayor?
Do you want to touch on the difference in delivery time and how that affects you financially?
Definitely, definitely. If you look on the back page of your report, you'll see, given to me by Debbie Clark, our accountant, we've spent so far from October up until the eighth month here, which was last month, $115,302.17 suggested auto maintenance. The two trucks that I'm referring to at this particular time that you approved to advertise for on August 3, 2010, was a 1998 Chevrolet and a 1997 International. And it took up a lot of our funds. Every other week, if not, I say every week, we were down. Last week, we were down twice with the two vehicles. The amount of money that we're spending on these two trucks here would alleviate, and to put them to rest and to purchase, lease to purchase the two that we're trying to get now, would alleviate some of the debt that's coming up on the sanitation department and the citizens.
So to clarify, there was a difference of...
I say $67,000 every month on these vehicles.
And there was a very small difference in the bids. Alden Parker?
Right, I'd be glad to speak. I mean, I attended the bid opening, or the bid, and the, I'm very comfortable with the fact that we are, we have, we had a low bid of 303.118, the second place bid was 303.687 for a difference of approximately $500. The lead times were the big difference. The low bid had a lead time of 150 days, the second place bidder had a lead time of 60 days. They also had a closer warranty, warranty location being Columbus. So I'm very comfortable with the, also, the second place bidder met or exceeded every spec that was in the specification. The first place bidder did take exception to a couple of specifications. So I'm very comfortable in saying that the second place finisher was by far the best bidder, and based on the amount of money Ms. Boyd is spending each month on maintenance, I think it's an easy, easy justification to spend an extra $500 to get the trucks three months earlier. Any questions from the board? Go ahead.
Mayor, can I speak to this real quick?
You may.
Should the board's desire be to accept this second place bid for routine maintenance in Columbus, the motion needs to be crafted in a way, just like Mr. Parker just said it, where he mentions the low bid, the next low bid, what the difference is, and all the findings of facts as to why the second place bid is the best situation here. So long as you do that, it'll be covered.
All right. Further discussion?
I got to add, I'm getting ready. I got to add. Mayor, I move approval of the acceptance of the best bid for two 25-yard reloading refuge trucks, that being from Waters Truck and Equipment based on lead time and service location. The lowest bid being Sampson Equipment at $303,118.40, the next bid being Waters Truck and Tractor at $303,687, for a difference of $568.60.
Do you have that reduced in writing?
Absolutely not, because I didn't...
Okay, I've got through based on lead time and service location.
I mean, I didn't know, do I have to put the low bid in there? Okay. I mean, okay, well, I'd be glad to read again.
Can you give it to me a little slower?
A little slower, sure. I move approval of the acceptance of the best bid for two 25-yard reloading refuge trucks, that being Waters Truck and Equipment. Low bid being Sampson Equipment at $303,118.40.
What, what's the number?
With next bid being Waters Truck and Tractor at $303,687, being $568.60 higher.
And the reasons for going with the second price? Just bullet pointed.
Based on choosing the second place bid based on lead time and service location.
All right, so I've got a motion to accept the best bid for two 25-yard rear refuge trucks, that being from Waters Truck and Equipment. The low bid being from Sampson Equipment at $303,118.46, with Waters...
40 cents.
40 cents. With Waters Truck and Equipment being the next lowest bid at 303, $303,687. The difference between the two being $568.60. And the reason that the Waters bid is the best bid being lead time and service location. Is that your motion?
That's correct.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alden McCord. Alden Parker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Alden Parker's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
I've got one question for you. Do any of these trucks been in operation November? Are they white?
White.
White, okay.
All right, and that carries us through the end of all matters scheduled for open session. We do have matters pending potentially for executive session. A motion to move into closed session for determination of whether there's a need to move into executive session would be...
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alden Dumas to move into closed session to determine whether there is need for executive session. Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alden Carver. Hold on, y'all be careful, we're coming close to losing the floor. Alden Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Well, now moving to a closed session, we'll give everybody a moment to exit the room.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Hi, I'm Bill Green, executive producer for WOBV Channel 5. In an effort to improve your viewing quality in Starkville, WOBV and MetroCast are undergoing several major changes. Channel 5 will be changing its affiliate in the near future, upgrading our equipment, and begin showing programming created in our own studios. MetroCast has made a major investment in its wiring infrastructure in Starkville and the surrounding area, and will be changing its channel lineup. While WOBV and MetroCast are modifying their infrastructure, there may be periods where we are off the air. We ask your forgiveness and patience while we are upgrading our signal and programming in Starkville. If we do go off the air on the cable, please try to dust off your old rabbit ears and tune into us on Channel 5 the old-fashioned way. Thank you for watching WOBV Channel 5, the station in the heart of the city.